Do I start over? Okay. In receipt of communications from Richard Calmary, we'll review that. Mortgage tax in Chuyoga County was $13,161.65. A letter from Sterling Seniors and in receipt of a letter from Gus Tab. We'll go to the public forum and I'm going to change the sequence here because the water thing is an issue, but we also happen to have Steve Winkley available online. So again, I would remind you, please be recognized. And I'll ask whoever is speaking for the Sterling Water Stewards, which is, I believe, Karen Haas, if she wants to get up and make a statement. Steve, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay. So Karen Haas from the Sterling Water Stewards is going to speak. And then we may have some questions for you that you might be more helpful to answer.
It's fine.
Karen, if you want to go ahead and get started, you can stand anywhere that makes you feel comfortable, except in the middle of Chuyoga Street.
Okay, good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and fellow citizens. So why are we facing this water crisis here now? It's because our fairhaven public wells are at risk. Our spring water is remarkably pure. We don't have to treat our water. We only have to chlorinate it because we don't have contaminants in our spring water. And that's our public water supply, our public aquifer. Our public aquifer isn't unique in the town of Sterling. We have many beautiful spring water wells in the town of Sterling. So throughout the Northeast, developers and large scale farmers are buying up land with water resources. Why? Because water is a great investment right now. It's becoming more scarce and more valuable. This is why William Huntress has purchased the land adjacent to Fairhaven's public well. Mr. Huntress, doing business as Sterling Spring Water LLC, says he plans to pump Sterling Spring Water and Bottling. He says he's going to build a bottling plant here. But once he obtains bulk water extraction permit, he will also be free to truck Sterling Water to a bottling plant elsewhere. Mr. Huntress has no known previous experience in the water bottling business. He is, however, a deep pockets developer from Buffalo who has projects all over the northern hemisphere. He's huge, big development, deep pockets. I have brought some Buffalo News articles that give us a glimpse into his reputation in his hometown. In the water bottling business, Nestle has been the dominant player in water bottling. But Nestle has pulled out all bottled water except for sparkling water because the company's tired of fighting with communities. This has created an opening in the water bottling business. Hence, a big investor is here in Fairhaven and Sterling. So I felt I had to set the stage. Why? What's next? We're assuming that Mr. Huntress will file an application for a special use permit for bulk water extraction with the town of Sterling sometime in the first quarter or first half of 2022. We assume this because he ran pump tests on his land within the past month, which indicates he's gathering data necessary for permit application purposes. We also assume that the reason that the town of Sterling knocked back the timeframe for the village's proposed moratorium on bulk water extraction permit from one year to six months is to accommodate the Huntress project. We're trying to do a strategic plan. We have to assume something. We look at what's going on. We're trying to plan what's best to protect the community. The only justification that the Sterling Town Board gave for the timing change was we can always extend it. Special use permits, knowing for the Sterling Planning Board, the permit applicant must show that their project will do no harm. We assume that Mr. Huntress will sue the town of Sterling should his permit application be denied. If you think I'm just standing up and slandering you, please read the coverage of, he tends to be very aggressive in pursuing what he wants. The Huntress project will do harm. It is located in the recharge area of our public well field. Extracting water in this area will lower the water table because water that is trucked away or bottled doesn't go back into the water table. Brown water contamination is another potential harm. Any contaminants that enter the ground from Huntress's land could contaminate our public water. It's right there, right next to it. It can contaminate our water. That could cost us money to fix, or worse, seriously disrupt our water supply until we find and develop another source. Sterling Water Stewards intends to present strong scientific evidence of the potential adverse impacts of the Huntress project at the town of Sterling public hearing regarding the application for a special use permit. Our consulting hydrogeologists, Ed Hinchey and Don Siegel, of independent environmental scientists, are world-class, and they've been involved in many of the major cases involving drinking water nation-wide. They have already helped us by telling us that the total recharge area of our public wells is at least the one mile radius surrounding the wells. This encompasses all of Huntress's land and beyond. The recharge area is the area from which wells draw groundwater. Our experts need access to all of the existing data about the town of Sterling aquifers. Unfortunately, there are administrative complications and gaining access to the results of research conducted in the 2015-2016 timeframe leading up to the implementation of a special use permit for bulk water extraction, which was adopted in 2016. We're calling on the village of Fairhaven to take the lead in clearing up these administrative complications. Please work with the town of Sterling to provide, the New York World Water Association, who is representative, is on the line here, with the necessary permissions to release all of the data related to the New York World Water Association's most recent research in the town of Sterling. Ideally, this would be released in a publicly available research report. We request that the report be delivered as soon as possible so we can use this research to prepare for any, for the special use permit hearing, which may be coming relatively soon. We understand that the 2015-2016 research results included an inventory of all the wells in the town of Sterling, additional mapping besides the town of Sterling aquifer map, which is already public information, identification of potential sources and types of brown water contaminants, and other valuable but currently unavailable information. We know that the New York World Water Association is already working on a wellhead protection plan for the village of Fairhaven. We are asking if the research report be added as an interim deliverable or alternative, that a second project be developed just to deliver this long overdue research report as soon as possible. Regarding the wellhead protection plan for the village of Fairhaven, we would like to know the schedule for the project. When will the plan be completed? How will the plan be incorporated into law? How long will it take to get the plan into law? And most importantly, since the village wells are low pated in the township, what authority will enforce the provisions of those laws? It appears that the New York State Department of Health is the agency with authority over such laws, reaching for another jurisdiction and saying, hey, you're moving our well. But to my knowledge, the Department of Health has not been known to be very active in doing this sort of jurisdiction, which is why we are in favor of other things that we have at well. It's not that we are not as favorite of wellhead protection planning laws for both the village and the town, but enforcement's a key issue with those. The last time the village of Fairhaven developed a wellhead protection law was 1990. And it was developed by Strudon Dweller, and it sits on a shelf. It was never implemented into law. It's a very nice report, it's on my website. So that was 30 years ago, and it has no effect. So what can we do? What can we do besides preparing for the special use permit law and mounting the best defense of our water based on the best data? Our community needs to protect our public well field through strong zoning laws. We call for a longer moratorium. We're in favor of the moratorium that's going to public hearing because it can overhelp us for seven to six months. But we need a longer moratorium that will give the town of Sterling time to implement an aquifer protection overlay zone in the vicinity of our public wellhead. Bulk water extraction would be prohibited in this zone. So with any activities that might cause brown water, there's a typo in the thing that I gave you, it says extraction, it should be remedial. Then someone with the project, if we had that zone, somebody with a project with a like Huntress, instead of being in a special use permit action, which you can drive a truck through and you can easily sue, it would be in a zoning thing, which is a much tougher law. You would have to apply for a zoning exception and prove why that should be granted. And if we had an aquifer overlay zone that prohibited anything in our wellfields like that, it would be a much tougher case for him to make. We also need to tighten the regulations for bulk water special use permits to protect the landowners' water resources. So this is a town of Sterling issue. But those people who live out in the country, when large scale farmers and bulk water haulers want to buy land that has rich aquifers, which they're doing, and extract water in bulk, we have to make sure they don't adversely impact their neighbors in the town of Sterling who can't afford to hire lawyers and consultants to defend themselves. So the time is now. As a community, we can't afford to be asleep at the switch as our water resources are at risk. If our wells dry up or are contaminated, we'll either have to hook up to another system, find another source of spring water, or use Lake Ontario water and treat it. All of these options will be more expensive than the water supply we have. Treated lake water or water piped in from other communities won't be as pure as our beautiful waters we have here. So be a good steward and leave a legacy of pure local spring water for your grandkids. Learn the facts and get involved.
Karen, would you like to start off with any questions for Steve on this report that you're looking for? Because there's a little confusion, report, plan, and what he has available and what he's already turned over. Or I can ask a question, but I think I'm trying to communicate our emails.
Would it possibly just have to follow him and you and have that as an aside because it's kind of complicated? I think we could, I would love to be involved in a conversation, but I don't think that the village board meeting is the time to do it. I think this is what I'm calling on the village of Fairhaven to do, is work through this problem because it's an interesting problem. But my safe answer is during the Zoom meeting with Mr. Winkley in February, which I had transcribed so that it would be clearer what I'm talking about, he said, I never had a chance to write support. That's what he said, never had a chance to write support for the project. And then all the things that I just listed, he listed. All the things that I said, it's our understanding that this includes documentation of all the wells, documentation of the tameness and other stuff. He said that during the hearing. So I refer you to the Zoom meeting transcript, and then I would be more than happy to involve the discussion group so I could understand. But I am looking for a recent report. I am not looking for a plan. I'm looking for the result of the research because there's very, very, very little data on our aquifer. He collected great data. I believe because of time and rattle and stuff like that, I don't know. But back to the discussion, I'd be glad to be involved.
Steve, you can hear me, this is Mayor Vaseel.
I can, Jim.
Did you hear any of?
Oh, yeah, I listened to it all. And I'm very thankful that there's a engaged public that's interested in water. I think that's very important. But I want to just touch on a few things Karen mentioned. First of all, we're a nonprofit organization. We're not paid consultants. We're all funded, we're funded by all of your tax money. The village and town are members of our association. And so we did do, we began providing free technical assistance to the town of Sterling when this issue first arose in 2015. So this is obviously not a new issue. And so we provide assistance, we don't write reports, okay? We write and assist communities with implementing protection plans. I'm sorry if there's a distinction between a report. Report is made by a consultant. A plan is made by a community, and we facilitate the implementation of a plan by a community. So the work we did beginning in 2015, and unfortunately had to stop in 2016 because of potential litigation by a private citizen in Sterling, was intended to develop a drinking water, or what we call back then a source water protection plan. And as part of that plan, basically, we looked at the entire town of Sterling, public water sources. Yes, that includes the village of Fairhaven, but it includes a lot of privately owned small water systems, campgrounds, Renaissance festivals, you name it. And we did a lot. I'm a hydrogeologist. I studied. My thesis advisor at Syracuse University was Dr. Siegel, the consultant that Sterling Water Stewards has hired. And I was a grad student with Ed Hinchey. So I know them very well and been in contact with them. So as part of the plan, we mapped the aquifers based on doing a survey of all available, readily available well information. That included information whenever someone drills a well, they have to, the well driller has to submit that information to DEC and the homeowner. And then I get that information from DEC, and that usually has pretty good latitude and longitudes, locations on it. We were able to map that. Now, beginning in the year 2013, the town of Sterling, before they developed any of their water districts, did an extensive survey of homeowners through their engineering firm. And that's confidential information in terms of the results of that. But they, being the town, was willing for me to go through that. And by parcel ID number, I was able to identify all the well information, whether they had, relatively speaking, a good well or a poor well. And I mapped that. I also got information from the New York State Department of Transportation and some historic studies that the U.S. Geological Survey had done. So I put all this together, mapped it using what we call GIS or Geographic Information Systems, drove every road in town, looked at oil and soil survey maps. The New York State Geological Survey was also mapping the town at that time. So there was a lot of information utilized to make some very detailed aquifer maps. And using that information, I did not do any pump tests. I did not do any site-specific tests. The results, the 1990 wellhead protection study that was done by, what was then called Sterns and Wheeler, that was, reviewed that as well. And, you know, got the information from the village and the county on the water wells and looked at all the, very honestly, fairly limited data that exists on the well field right now, the two wells, two active wells. And using all that information, worked with the town of Sterling's zoning commission to amend their zoning to do really two things. One is to come up with, and most towns, trust me, do not have their own set of bulk water and bottled water standards, but we worked together on that using a model of the, from different communities across the Northeast that have dealt with, as Karen mentioned, the Nestleys and the other larger companies, using that as a model, came up with site plan regulations because this is a commercial use, a particular use that would be applied for. So we came up with standards for the development of approval. They closely mirror the states and in some cases are more stringent than the state's requirements. But keep in mind that any bottling plan will also have to get a DEC water withdrawal permit and will also have to be permitted by the New York State Department of Health. Both entities regulate, one regulates the quantity, that's DEC, and DOH, Department of Health, regulates bottled bulk water sales. So we also, in the town, enacted an aquifer overlay district that basically sets another, puts another set of regulations on zoning, for example, residential zoning, commercial zoning. There's also an aquifer overlay district. So that was the reason why we did the detailed mapping. I sent Ed Hinchey that map. I also have sent the village and town all the very detailed map, aquifer maps with all the well data. I've offered to send that to Sterling Water Stewards and their consultants, and also all the GIS, what we call shape files, all the very detailed information. That's the basis of those maps. There was not a report done. There would never have been a report done. There would have been a plan. Going forward, there will be a plan done because the town of Sterling will be drilling a well adjacent to the village of Fairhaven's well, and I've been told this will happen later this year, most likely in the fall. And as part of that process, and I've been on both sides of this, working as a consultant and the past 26 years, I'm reviewing these applications to DEC for wells. So the town of Sterling will have to apply for a water withdrawal permit, similar to what a bulk water person, developer would do, except probably more rigorous. They will have to meet what's pumping test protocols that I forwarded on to the village, I believe, today. But those are readily available online. And as part of that process, they will have to monitor all the wells in the area, will have to do a 72-hour pump test. And from that information, for the first time, we will have quantitative data that will show how much water the well field will be able to sustain, what areas will be drawn down by the pumping. It's my hope that, it's my strong wish that all the wells, at least, the village of Fairhaven has two pumping wells now, at least one of those wells have, has to have, in my opinion, a sensor, it's called a transducer, put in it so that when the town of Sterling's new well is pumped, that effect on that well can be monitored. And then any wells in the area, that includes, I can't remember the name of the gentleman's well across the road, any wells within a, and DEC does not specify a distance, but any wells within the area be monitored during the 72-hour test. And all this information will be, will be part of the application process, will be put in a report by a professional hydrogeologist, not myself. I would be reviewing the report on behalf of the village, I assume, and will be using all this data. Again, the existing data is from the 70s and mid 80s. And in 1986, they weren't doing tests like this. This wasn't beginning until really the mid 90s is when this level of testing, pump testing was required. But they'll have to define a wellhead protection area, for example, for the village wellfield that will include the town of Sterling well. And so we'll be able to see what the capacity of the wellfield is, what the effect of any of the wellfield is on surrounding areas, and possibly what, in turn, what the effect of a well across the road from a municipal wellfield would have. But I can tell you, and after reviewing these for 25 years, DEC would be keenly aware of all you folks and the fact that it's a public water supply this close. This is not something that happens every day. The standards for review will be heightened. They will have to make sure, and I know there's probably skepticism, whether a state agency would do that or not, but we're talking about protecting a public water supply. So everyone does have to be diligent and diligent, I had to make up the word, pick that word up perhaps, diligent, to ensure that any future development does not impact on this, on this well supply, which will soon also not only serve the village but also the town. So the need is even more important than ever. This, what you call wellhead protection plan is actually, wellhead protection's a term that I like to still use, but is actually not used anymore. The state now calls it drinking water source protection. I call it source water protection. But this plan that will be done will be protecting the village and the joint village and town supply. And it will, it will protect, define the recharge area, the amount of water that can be supplied from this joint wellfield. And it will provide the basis of protecting against, well, and against, but in conjunction with other withdrawals. Well, and against, but in conjunction with other withdrawals. Now, the village does not have the ability to directly protect their own water supply. This is not uncommon, I'd say at least half, probably seventy-five percent of villages. Their water supply is outside their village limits and. Just due to availability of land and where aquifers are and where contaminant sources are. They, they typically, and they did in this case, look to go outside the village. The nineteen ninety. Wellhead Protection Plan Study, whichever you want to call it, done by, I would call it a study because it was done by a paid consultant. Sterns and Wheeler, referred to, drafted up a set of what we call watershed rules and regulations. That, that's done through the New York State Department of Health. The New York State Department of Health has put an effective moratorium on those, at least for groundwater withdrawals. I believe there's only been one or two. Since I've been with rural water, actually. I started in nineteen ninety-five. I'm not sure there, I think that was the last year a groundwater watershed rules and regulation was enacted. And this is public health law that's enacted by the state. I've been told and encouraged that localities need to protect their waters. And so now the Town of Sterling has a stake. It's not just the village, which is in the Town of Sterling, but now the Town of Sterling will have a, a well. In this well field that will need protection. So they now will have a direct stake in protecting. Water. That they're using. So just a couple other things that Karen mentioned. I did not complete a potential contaminant source inventory or survey as part of the, the plan. Proposed plan, didn't get to that. Kind of had my hands full getting the zoning done and passed. I think we did a good job, I really do. Most towns, the size of Sterling don't have what the Town of Sterling has. It responded to a threat and obviously that threat still exists. The moratorium, I was asked to help draw up a moratorium. I did put a year in, that was reduced to six months, but I understand with. The fact that they can extend it for at least six months, so it's equivalent to a year. They're thinking, I'm not going to speak for Scott, the town supervisor, but they believe that the. Town of Sterling well is going to be put in this year. It will be this detailed information, there will be a plan that the village will be able to. Village and town will be able to put together to protect the well field. And so they didn't feel it was necessary to extend, start out with a year. That you can take that up with the town, I'm not elected official. So this new plan will be called a Drinking Water Source Protection Plan. The state has a framework now for the first time. You can go to DEC and, and Google. DTWSP two, if you're interested in finding out, or I can send a link. What that framework is going to involve, I will be going beyond that. It may mean doing more, a more complex zoning that we, that we have. That's not up to rural water, that'll be up to. The Town of Sterling with the village's recommendation. But this will be a joint. Plan, a village and town plan. It will be open to the public, I hope that the stakeholder committee will include Sterling Water stewards and other. Interested groups and that we can work together, I'm eager to work on it, but until we have the. Technical information, which I can't wait to get the hands on. I'm just laying the foundation and the laying the foundation is basically updating the data sets that. That I did back five, six years ago. And again, I forwarded that to the village and town, would be glad to forward that on directly to. Sterling Water stewards or to Ed or to, to Ed, Don is retired. And living out his days with his grandchildren, but. I would be glad to be a participant in this process. So I talk a lot, I'm really excited to be working again in. Fairhaven and Sterling, you certainly have valid concerns. I do think we have some good regulations that provide. Framework and the moratorium is a, is a real positive step, so. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that. Definitely, what I've given the village and town are the, are the maps. But I'd be glad to share with you, with anybody. The data sets, the GIS data sets that, that went into making the maps, yes.
So, so Steve, you're going to provide, and maybe you said you already did, and I'll have to look through my emails. The, the data that went together with making this map.
That little map you're holding. Jim, James, I sent you, and I sent Scott, the town supervisor. The twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch PDF map. So if, you know, you can take it to Staples, whatever, that map and print it out. But the data, what we call the GIS data. That each, for example, the wells, the well points that are on there. I will send all those to whoever wants. I'm having trouble hearing people in the audience, I'm sorry. Yes, and I supplied that information to Ed Hinchey. Ed has not gotten back in touch with me. I told him if he wanted the GIS information, any other information, to please get ahold of me. I have not heard back from, from Ed, he's your consultant. So I would be glad, like you said, it's public information. This is the first I've been asked for that level of information, I would be glad to give that information. Karen, I cannot hear you, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, the, the information you have, I mean, I, 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 there, there hasn't been. There needs to be. Hard data collected and there will be. Right, that, that's why, that's why I was asked to, to, and I'm sorry if I'm talking over, I'm having trouble hearing. And that's why I was asked to draft up a moratorium, to allow the time. To, for this information to be collected, processed, reported. And that, and a plan to be done for the well field. Is six to twelve months time enough? I would have liked to seen twelve months, but. A twelve month moratorium, but I guess there's a way to make it a twelve month moratorium. I, I am not, you know, I, I just want, I, I agree, I want to make sure that there is enough time. That there is, to collect this information, process it. And, and basically, if necessary, amend the zoning to. You know, to protect the water supply, so. I, I think there will be time, but that's really a question to ask. The Town of Sterling, who are going to be developing the well. And their consultants, their engineering firm, what their timetable is. Until the March meeting that we had, that Zoom meeting, I wasn't even aware the Town of Sterling was drilling a well. Village's well field, so that kind of caught me by surprise, so.
Steve, Steve. Was Karen, do you have anything else? What I'm going to ask Karen to do, is get with your consultants and see what they did receive. And then if there's other information that we didn't, we can have a conference call so that we can clear up. Like if there's some missing pockets of information. That we're talking about, and if I have it and I'm just not up to speed on what I'm reading. We have public information. So if Steve gave it to us, we'll give it to you. But, but if Steve's already, you know, helping by providing that to your consultants, let me know. And then we'll do a conference call so we can make the list, because he, it sounds like he's willing to do that direct too. Which may take, not that we want to be out of the middle of this, we want to know what's going on. I think that would be the first step. The second step is we've got to show up to the Town of Sterling meeting on. On the twenty-first and express our concerns for the, the moratorium, or maybe I will give. Scott Crawford call and ask him if he can have his consultant available that's actually doing the study. That's involved in the project, they hired him outside, so we can get some time clean, it sounds like any time. And that would support whether the six months or a year, would a year be more appropriate? Just to have that, if he says it's going to take seven or eight months.
What I heard Steve say online is his new drinking water source protection plan. Will include data that we need, all the data we need, and so that seems to be, the problem is the timing. Because if that plan isn't delivered before we go into a special permanent hearing with Hunter, it's not going to do it any good. And he's focused, because his task is the project to put a new well right next to the village well. And so that's his focus. But our focus is a potential special use, permanent hearing. Where we're going to bring in consultants that need to do the best, to have the best data. And so just so we're clear on that, that the time we're able for the, you know. I, we need to get on, we need to be strategic and get this thing to permanent timing of some use.
So again, that's, that's the Town of Sterling, C two AE and C two eighteens consultant. That they hired with the hydrologist, this must be a small circle because they all seem to know.
My point is, if you don't, if you don't get this, if all the data is going to be delivered in the plan. We need the plan well in, in advance of a date. If they don't change the more time from six months, we could be in a hearing as early as February or March.
So then, I'll try to say this a little differently. One, we should show up to the twenty-first. Two, we can get the timeline, we need to talk to the engineer and the consultant to see what their timeline is for the project. If they're not, you know, my, my understanding is they're going to be taking. I don't know if they can be drilling a well by October, November, and they'll be taking the data before that. Or if they're going to be taking the data in October. And that's what Mr. Winkley is waiting for is, Ian will participate in observations of the tests. On the village's behalf, so I reached out to him early on. And also to review that data as an independent third party for, in the best interest of the village. So we have somebody on our side that is at least looking at it. I'm sure there's nobody on the board here that may understand that, I may be wrong. Let's see if it draws down in our effort. So that may be where I don't know or understand and. Whether, whether the October date is the date for filling the well and we'll have to test data before that. Or if that's the test. So that may be a good, I, I don't know, I'm just taking your word for what you said. The, I know that the engineers talked about an October timeframe, so I think that's the question we ask. And, and I'll, you know, fairness to Scott, I'm going to give him the heads up, these are, you know, you need to have your, not just your engineer, but. Consulting hydrologist at the meeting to answer some questions, just like Karen was kind enough to communicate with me over the last week. And, and I could get, make arrangements for Steve to be here as best he could. But, you know, the consultant and engineers that are actually doing the job, they should be able to attend the meeting.
And, and if I could just say the key to making that moratorium work in the six months timeframe was coordination on, by the village officials. And the committees involved and just keeping on it and keeping on it and keeping it forefront on the agenda. Every single meeting, be there, show up, show your concern and be active. And, and just like we, we made, we got the more, the less moratorium we ran, we did it in our timeframe and we got it done. But you got to be there and you got to show your concern and, and just keep on it and you'll get it done. You can do it, but you just got to, you know, show your concern, you guys have done great, showing your concern and listen and just keep on it, you'll, you'll get it done. And if you have to, if definitely push it to twelve months, you can, but you know, try, try to do that in six months. You know, just, just push for that six months and stay on Sterling to, to, to get it done. And, and stay active. That's my, you know, that's my, in the village of Fairhaven, we're, we're behind you a hundred percent. Whatever we can do, but really, it falls on Sterling, it really does.
And just so you all know, they stayed in a statewide. Protecting drinking water source webinar, seminar, which some of you probably stayed in and also. And for small villages and municipalities like ours. Their recommended resource for assistance is rural water and Steve Winkley. So that's what they're suggesting everybody in the state to do.
So, well. We need to pass it on to the town, we're listening, he helped us write it up. Pass that on, I, I just checked my calendar, I didn't want you to think I was ignoring this. To make sure I had an opening in that, my calendar for that, if I had to make, so. I don't know if I could speak as eloquently as. Uh, to make sure I had an opening in that, my calendar for that if I had to make it. So um, I don't know if I could speak as eloquently as Karen did on that the way she did, but I can surely speak up to the village uh, and the trustees that, you know, this is a concern that we have. You know, the things, the, the moratorium length and, and the, the radius. Um, I get, I'm going to have to check what we sent them because I couldn't remember if we sent them a half mile or a mile. That may have been something we, for the radius. Uh, to see what we had in our draft.
We did a half mile. We suggested a mile, it's all of that is awkward. But I think that now we, we've talked about it enough, so people are starting to get quiet. But we had submitted it to the town at the time the moratorium came in, that the, that you submitted a half mile and the only feedback from our consultants should be a mile. And so that went to the town board, which said, we're going to go over the village stuff. And there was no consideration, no question. We brought it back to the village and presented to the board, wanted to go anywhere because this is why we all have to get real serious and pay attention, you know, because it's the difference. Um, but it's, we can't really think about moratorium, it, it's, we either go to up or down. It uh, it either gets voted up or down as is. And then if it's going down, we go back in the class, it goes back in. So our position is go ahead and prove this step on some data. You know, we'll figure it out later, but it's important for everybody to get, that's the area we need to protect and figure this out. That's all. But the moratorium and that half mile looks okay.
So um, first, I, I would like to reflect on behalf of the board that we have taken it serious. So I, 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 you know, don't, uh, that, that uh. And we have taken it serious. We took the step to do the moratorium. We're learning more every day as it goes. And, and I don't think we've let our foot off the gas pedal. Um, the, you know, not, again, we took some of the recommendations. One of the recommendations they accepted was the half mile. You know, did we know at the time, maybe a mile would have been better? I'm not sure. Steve is a, an expert on it. I don't think he would have advised us. Um, you know, one year versus year, I don't know. We've had, I don't know if it's necessarily moratoriums with laws and stuff. And at the meeting that we vote on, if we make a change to it, we can vote on that change that night and it becomes part of a document as it goes. So I think it would be important to have a strong showing if that's what this next meeting is about, is vote, voting on the moratorium.
Well, the problem is that after state law, uh, what happened is that according to the state law, um, which is why we have our attorneys, we're not here to threat, we have the attorneys, so that when I say according to the state law, huh. But our board members, attorney, has advised us about the state law, which is once the town board voted on moratorium, it votes to a public hearing. And then it just had voted on. Before they extended the public hearing and announced that they put a change. Now it's up to the public hearing, you either vote it up or down. And we really need a one year moratorium for the purposes of uh, getting a zoning protection overlay of aquifer protection overlay built around our whole aquifer protection area. Um, that's what we really need. But we're not going to go next June, go in on June 1st and say, please, the waters are against this moratorium. We're going to say, we're in favor of it. Um, we just think it doesn't go far enough. We want a year and we want it not for the purposes of the punt test, but for the purposes of implementing strong zoning protection for our water. So I say vote up the moratorium, get to work, and then do a second moratorium for the purposes of, you know, get that data and then put it, put zoning. The only thing that is going, it's our best play with them. It's our best, it's our best way of implementing local laws so we don't have to go through these kinds of things. So.
Understood.
Yeah, and I agree, you guys have been very, I, I go playing um, for anything, you can hear a response. I'm here always, very, very responsive.
And I think we're going to continue to be and, and I hope we see this many people on next Monday. We, we need this. Is, uh, is Steve going?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Are we, are we all set with Steve, Karen? Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you making time in your.
Sure. I will, um, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I will, um, I'll set up a folder. Um, I'll forward you the, all, all the information and you can share it with Sterling Water, whatever. That's kind of my chain of custody.
Okay.
The municipality. Um, but, but I'll, because it'll be a lot of information, more than will fit in an email as an attachment, I will set up a link and then um.
Good.
Okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
To, I guess, everybody else, you've heard from Karen, you've heard from some of us. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the after this? Yes, state your name and, state your name and so forth for the record.
I detail, I like.
Just, they won't see it though.
All right. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen. I'm not taking as far of any route. I have a few questions that have been forewarned. And I understand you are concerned about the, but I would like to know exactly why and what the agreement, if there is some reason that I'm adhering to, that you have entered into with Sterling regarding our land and our forty acres and wealth that into which they will be putting in another wealth. So what would the agreement that you entered into, defining, is it irrevocable?
I would have to pull the agreement out because I don't have.
You don't know what you agreed to?
Really? No, I couldn't tell you. You know how many things I have to sign and do on a daily basis?
Do you need your agreement before you sign it? I don't want to be angry, but.
But you are.
This is our water. You are, I don't know what kind of data you base this agreement on, what the agreement means. What it means to us as far as our supply of water.
So the agreement, I'll try to sum it up as best that I can remember. It had to do with the volume of water that was needed and in order for them to expand their district and put in a storage tank, they needed to put in a well. And so there was, in that agreement was a number of testing. Here's the bottom line. If the testing for the well fails, then the project fails.
Oh, I understand.
So there, there, you have to, we had to agree, not that we had to, but in order for them to continue down and expand the district, we had to agree that we would provide water through this new well, which the Town of Sterling, under the grant agreement, has to provide and install and will make payments for the next four years. And the village will uh, go ahead and maintain it and the water going out will be metered and reimbursed to the village. So that's the Reader's Digest version. Do I know all the details to speak at this meeting? No, I don't have the agreement in front of me.
Okay, is it funded by who?
It's, it's a grant funding through, part of it is through, uh, and I'd have to look. It's through the federal.
Federal, state, what?
Through the federal, the federal government funded program through, what do we get? Some USDA?
Just.
Yeah. USDA.
Part of this ready program.
Yeah, part of it's the ready program.
Okay. So who actually will own this well?
The well, as I understand, will be actually owned by the Town of Sterling because the agreement said they have to own the well.
On our property?
Yes.
And we will maintain?
Yes.
Why didn't they just extend District 1? They already have unlimited source of water for their unlimited development they hope to have.
Well, I, I think that economically it was probably unfeasible to do that. I wasn't at that meeting, well, why they chose not to extend. But we are in the Town of Sterling. They are.
Oh, I'm well aware of that.
Well, if you want.
But my, my issue has to do with Jake and Lori Griffin. Making decisions without having the data to, to, how can you?
We had information that said.
What information?
Listen, if you, if you don't want to listen, then I won't speak.
No, I'm, I'm.
We have, we have information on how many thousands of gallons we can pump a day based on historical information that we have pumped before and some of the things that Mr. Winkley referred to. And this was not going to, uh, get even near what the capability of, of our two pumps are now, which we only run, so one note, one at a time. Reason we have two pumps and so we switch them, one's older than the other, so we switch them in the, over the winter. So that's, so we had some information that, that we knew about based on some of the old data that wasn't, again, the technical, what, what's available now technically to grab uh, and get data to confirm it. Part of the agreement is they got to run these tests. They got to prove that it'll work. If they run these tests and it doesn't work, then the project's dead. They may be going to Aqua. Aqua District 1.
Okay, with that in mind, what is the agreement that we have for District 3?
I, I would have to look that up too. I mean.
Are we selling water to Charlie?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
Selling. Okay.
Absolutely.
What about who will pay for District 4? Are we selling that or?
Yes. So, yes.
Yeah? All right, and the other question you're basically sort of all talked about over the department, is ten for the moratorium. Just already have that in mind.
And another part of this upgrade, including Sterling, okay, they're putting in a new well. But they're also going to upgrade our system for technical, technical stuff. Our system is old. We're going to get all this data so we can get upgraded. And it's all coming out of that funding that Sterling has.
So the funding has been going for a well and for enough data or?
That's part of the agreement, not on infrastructure itself.
Well, that's all I'm asking, you know.
It's part of the, yeah, that's part of, part of how we need our water. It's how we need it, right?
And they're going to, they're going to take and upgrade our existing data. It'll be up to the new technology that's available, but we don't have right now. Cause we can, be a lot of money to up, just upgrade before we get the system. So they, they put it in as part of the agreement, so.
So it's all covered by ready?
Yes. And not all of it. Some, some might be USDA.
So you'll get my, my copy of that. Or tell her where she can find it?
Yes, we, we, we have them at the village hall. And she's welcome to come in and, a lot of requests for it, so you can pull it. Yes, there's a, a process.
I know.
You're welcome. Anybody else? If we're good on that, um, and there's no other questions, we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. You're welcome to stay and listen. Uh, and uh. All right, uh. Lance and Darlin, I don't know how to say it last, Louis Shaw? ATV route? Yes.
I'm here with a group of people who live along the ATV route through the village. And basically will want to complain about the noise, dirt. Name in our, the village's statement, some snowmobiles and ATVs shall operate within the village's limits at a noise level that is not going to clear that someone's quiet enjoying. I have worked there on Fancher and Howard's. It gets loud. We were in our backyard over Memorial Day weekend, had a group of people, easily a hundred ATVs went by. I understand there's economics to it, but I think the village could come up with a better route instead of zigzagging through residential neighborhoods. I often see, and they're with adults, but I see younger children. And I, I think something bad is going to happen someday. Be there with their parents or not, you skip, keep your role. It's just a matter of time before someone goes through that intersection. Actually even had a little blurb from Auburn Citizen from a young man that lives in Howard. And it was, I would love that the snowmobiles and four-wheelers wouldn't ride on the sidewalk. It's my only place to ride my wife in the summer and they're all, all hours, super loud. Also, they go really fast and break my mom's favorite tree branches. Um, I don't know if it's having to park at the municipal parking lot. Walk in for whatever else they need, how they get to the store for gas, that's new people to figure out. And I have seen them go into places that aren't on the trail, up and down Fancher. Crossing um, 104, going down to uh, the west side.
So, yes.
And they go down right through the, it's maybe a mile to go.
So I, again, I don't have the map here, so I will, I've made a note. We'll pull the map out. We can contact, uh, at least I can, the app, the board, contact the president of the ATV club.
Hey, but let's see, there, there's a thing, and it's not all of it, so you can, maybe everyone in this group knows exactly where we're supposed to. We had the same problem last, a couple of years ago. It wasn't so bad last year because of COVID. But two years ago, and remember we had Brandon came to the rescue. I'm going to talk to these guys. I'm going to have a big dinner with them all up there at Brandon's, and I'm going to tell them stop. Guess what? It hasn't stopped. It's gotten worse. They're all over the place, Jim. All hours in the night, racing up and down the road, ground plant street. Things are long. I mean, four, five, six, kind of a recent, all over the place, kids without helmets. It's out of control. You may not see it as much, you're down by the lake, but they're all over these high streets of the village. They're not staying on the trail. They need to get off the trail. They need to get off the trail and stay out of the village. They need, they need to stay off, they need to stay out of the village.
Well, why couldn't they park in the municipal parking lot and walk?
Yep, stop them right at the municipal parking lot.
If they need to ask, you can go.
Could you state your name, please, for the record?
I live on Main Street, Main Street.
Thanks, Steve.
They can go down Main Street and get gas, turn the car right around and go right down and park right there in municipal parking lot. The parking is a big problem in town. I tried to go down Richmond this weekend. I'm sure you've seen it through. You're parked on all sides of the road. I tried to head south down Richmond. Somebody else was coming north. They had to back up so that I could pump, keep coming down Richmond. And then a bunch of ATVs came. So there we all were. There's nowhere, one car will get through. So if there's a fire down there, are you going to be able to down there? Are you going to be able to?
Yeah, and the ATVs, it's.
Well, it's, yeah, if we want it to be, you know, we want this good, first friendly community. If you've got, you know, people walking, people parking everywhere. You know, it's not, I, I walked on Main Street and heard people sitting on the bench going, I cannot believe we let ATVs run through this town. Like, me neither. You know, um, something bad is going to happen. There's children, without parents. I see it all the time. Um, something bad is going to happen and what they're going to say is that it's allowed in the village fair haven, but nobody ever enforcing any of the rules, you know? They're pulling wheelies, they're going through stop signs. Um, children don't know the rules you wrote. They shouldn't be allowed on our blue street. You know, it's our, it's our quality of life. You know, we're important. We're the residents here. You know, we should be able to have peaceful enjoyment of our home.
Understood. And, and ATVs like snowmobiles are registered with the DMV. are registered with the DMV and should somebody see somebody breaking the law, they should call the police, that would be the first thought. I'm I'm just telling you where you start, I said I would pull the map out now. These are your trustees, they're welcome to change the law, I I don't strike them. The trustees do. That's one of their duties. And if if there's that much angst about having ATVs and snowmobiles in the village, then it should be put on the agenda and considered. You know, and.
Oh, we can always change the route, have it go.
Well, I I I think Tina, I mentioned earlier, I would look at it and and see what the route is, because again, I don't have all this stuff committed to memory, but I do have the ability to research it and I do do that.
And many, many, many villages, you're not allowed to go on the side streets.
Well, I think there are villages that have stopped ATVs and snowmobiles from coming into their village.
Red Creek.
Red Red Creek, and of course, if you ask the businesses in Red Creek, they're they're not, they weren't too happy with it, but.
People can walk, though.
They they can't walk to the, they can't walk to the gas station to Bayside or to Red West End to fuel up their ATVs and snowmobiles, so the route would be important, I agree with that. And I don't think that, you know, those businesses would care not to have stop by. We do get more maybe than most because some of the trails go right through the state park. I would hope that, you know, going through the state park, they would be registered, insured, and doing the right thing because the state park police are have much more leverage than we do in the in the village without following, we would call law enforcement. You know, we've had a good presence of law enforcement with speeding around the village. Maybe nobody's noticed, but um, I know if they need to make their budget, this would be a good place to come to issue tickets, and and I think we've seen that the last few weekends, which we usually don't get a lot of, we've got to understand too, and I understand what you're saying, Lance, the sheriff and and state police is, there's been, they got to cover a county that's shaped like the state of Idaho.
Yeah, I mean, you call it, say, ah, ATVs driving through the town, oh, yeah, we'll be right there.
Well, you get that call, you get a call, you get that call in a lot with them, they they have to prioritize.
Right, absolutely.
Their.
They're coming from Auburn to come, you know, get some ATV or. I would like to have us look at the route, I I don't blame these people, it's horrible, in a residential neighborhood, you have those just strings and strings of these ATVs, you can't sit outside and enjoy your home, so I would like to see us look at the the route and see if there's something we can do to.
Right, we do route.
Yep.
We've got to start there, see what what neighborhoods it goes through and see if there's a suggested better route or if we want to eliminate it, those are your choices. We have an existing route, is that good, and do we better manage that? Do we revise the route? Or do we eliminate? I don't know, you have many other choices?
Say, let me come right down this far as um the store to get gas and turn around and go back to the trail. I went to some very limited to to get to your gas or or whatever, the gas food or whatever. The Brandon's in the corner, ice cream, gas and ice cream, you know, get a reach there to, you know, hardware, gas, ice cream, load. And they can park there in the village if they wanted to walk down, you know, for dinner.
Could it also create a lot of dirt and nobody picks that off, you know?
They don't need to be on the side streets, they don't need to be ramming up and down Lake Street and Richmond and racing all of the side.
They can just park at the municipal parking lot that turns, you know, not being yet, but they do get gas, so down to Bayside, get gas, turn around, go back to town.
Yeah, definitely, I agree, truly limited the track.
You know, we would, we, you know, there's many other people along that route that um, I I know a lot of the snowmobilers, it's a little bit more different, helps to walk or park and walk on the snowmobile. And a lot of the snowmobilers do get on like those others, so I like to keep that, you know, keep that there for them, you know, it's harder to walk them still, you're saying.
So.
Keep it to people easier. Do you have a different trail for snowmobiles?
So, I I can do this, I can commit that we'll set up a meeting with the trustees to review the route. You know, it's not going to happen overnight. And I'm not making excuses, but this this board has a lot on their plate. But we we hear you and we will like everything else, we have to prioritize those items.
Just ask me to go over there.
Lance, absolutely.
Thank you, Lance.
Thanks, Lance.
Uh, SOFA. Who's speaking for SOFA today? State name?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Charlie Gerberich, I'm uh, Peter Saul Drive in the town of Walcott. I'll tell you, the SOFA thing, I feel like a dad, I'm an elephant dad over here. You got, there's a lot going on with the water and whatnot, but thank you.
Tough critic, I think.
SOFA is the committee that brings you the Fourth of July celebration. For the last forty years, it was run by the village volunteer player party. When that volunteerism kind of died down, taken over by the volunteer chamber of farmers. And now it is run by your friends and your neighbors of a volunteer group that started twenty-five years ago. Right, with that being said, this village has been tremendous in support of SOFA. If we put on a good festival, the whole village, the whole community gets to enjoy that. And this village has always extended courtesy.
The the angst of going to meeting in the grass.
The cooperation with the village has always shown up. Gary and Joanne, Roger and Carrie and Bill, all of your trustees, you know, all of them stand up. And we want to continue that glory. I'd want to express the reason why SOFA chose not to have a parade this year. Right, last year, obviously, things depended on the COVID. When we make our plan in January and February and March, to plan on a parade that brings four to five thousand people to a quarter mile of Main Street. Those decisions that made in March and April, we could not in any kind of capacity. This whole village, this whole community is relying on eight or nine of your friends and neighbors to make a health recommendation to this community. We came to the conclusion that emerging from this international pandemic that there was no way as a group, as a committee, have a small community, there was any way to manage a crowd of that size. That being said, I understand everyone is wanting something to happen. We, as SOFA members, presented the best way of activity we can. I understand that there's a village committee that, a community committee that is organizing a parade. SOFA has offered our resources, our experience to that. We are still to date under the state guidelines wherein it's forbidden and social gatherings of five hundreds or better without proof of vaccination or negative testing with social distancing and required single point of entry and efficient. The village has expanded insurance coverage for the community parade. Every year, SOFA has paid for our own insurance. So we wish that the village, at least for this year, would extend the umbrella insurance coverage that you extended for this community parade to cover our car show and our craft. As a savings, we're also about eight hundred and fifty dollars, which we can put to our entertainment next year, maybe we can get Travis together or uh, I don't know, Snoop Dogg, the boy.
The car show isn't on our property. The car show isn't on our property, so we could not.
I'm sorry.
The car show is not our owner's property, the craft there is a different situation, that's on village's own property.
Okay.
But the car show is not. And I believe that privately owned.
I believe so too, yeah.
So we would have no.
That was your description.
Yes. I have a brief comment to make. You sent out a memo last week over your signatures saying that SOFA was not going to help this ad hoc group that is going to put on the parade, and we're glad that they're doing it, it's not true. We extended help. Shawna met with Charlie and we offered assistance, so I would like a retraction of that comment.
First of all, you're not going to get a retraction of a comment that wasn't me.
It was me.
Gus, you want me to pull the email out?
Yes.
So the email never. Gus, I'm going to speak. The email never said that SOFA was refusing to help. It never said that, never, never, never. Charlie was copied on the email, feel free to get, I I wouldn't have caught, I copied Charlie, so I was, if you read the email, it said that it would be great if SOFA would assist. Charlie, correct me if I say this wrong, because this really upset me that you sent this to the trustee.
Yes.
And I've worked hard for this village and will continue despite what you have written, okay? And I also said this may be a great opportunity to get new volunteers to fill in, I also said, oh, I also, you know, you read the parts, but you misread the email. I also said that the, you could get a new parade coordinator out of it. I also went to a meeting Tuesday night where all those community members were and said, I want you to remember while you're all sitting here talking about this, how difficult it is for the SOFA group to run these programs and to do this work. So I'm very offended and I would like you to retract this letter.
Charlie, you have a copy of that letter?
I mean, it's not on my computer.
It was an email, it wasn't a memo, and yes, it did come from me, folks. And I'll tell you what, as hard as I work for this village every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that really offended me, and Gus, I like you, we're we're neighbors, but I'll tell you what, I I'm not here to say, that hurt.
I remember one part, oh, you know, the one that offended me, whether, rather than I wish I had it, it said that if we did not provide help, that it would, the community would very well be aware that SOFA did not help, and it felt really like a threat to us, like you better show up.
That is a correct statement, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Lisa, that is correct statement. What I was trying to do was extend to, and again, you read emails the way, and and maybe I read this letter the way I think. Sometimes you read them based on your state of mind. Uh, what I was trying to extend it to Charlie and the group, I wouldn't have copied them if I thought I was trying to do something backdoor. Don't do that, all right, I don't do that. I copied Charlie and said, hey, here's an opportunity. You know, we know people will talk. People will talk.
That's right, I read it, though.
But I never said refuse to help, and 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 there was things in the letter that were stated that weren't in the email. The word refuse is not in it.
I'll I'll get a copy of it.
And we can talk later, Gus, I'd be glad, but I was really trying to and maybe I didn't express myself well, and you can see I'm a little upset about it and I apologize for that. But I was trying to say, hey, this might be an opportunity to grab these people that always I've been to the SOFA meeting for five years, what we owe, every year it starts off, we need volunteer. And then every year, we don't get the volunteer. And now these people are starting to see, just the parade alone, how difficult it is. And I went down on behalf of the village, as well as SOFA, to this meeting to say, I want you all to remember what you're doing right now and you're it it takes months of planning, and I know they're going to try to put this together in a short amount of time. When January first comes around and SOFA announces their first meeting, I hope we get this kind of participation. Because it's your community.
Oh, I read it, well, the implication was that SOFA refused to help this ad hoc group.
That's not what you said here. You said I state that SOFA refused, I did not state that, like, please, I would ask you, Gus, to read the email and I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
Okay.
I I really would, and I'm sorry if I got a little, but it it was meant to reach out to the SOFA group to say, hey, let's coach them along a little bit, I mean, we found out stuff we didn't. And they and they they, and I talked to Shawna and she said, yeah. And and she got some information on the parade, I never, I didn't know there was a parade permit, did anybody from SOFA know there was a parade permit?
Never had one.
There's never been one.
We can't find one anyway, well, I was.
We have a twenty-some out here that's never had a parade permit.
All right, so we might need to take that up. We might need to take it off our never list because we may have been doing something.
How did you find out about that?
When when I called to to get, which we've never done, we called the sheriff's department, they asked us about our parade. I know, and I, it was news to us, we got ahold of Christopher Colbert in his office with the New York State Department of uh the highway department. And he sent us the permit. And uh we were like, whoops, so we reached out to, I I think I sent it to Charlie because I didn't have your email or you would have been on it.
I got it.
And and said, hey, you guys know anything about this permit? Because we're not sure how to fill it out, and that would be great if you could help. And the uh I reached out to someone I know in the city of Oswego. Uh, and they said, well, it might have changed, but years ago, it was less than two hours, you didn't have to do it. So I was going to try to reach out to Christopher Colbert and or or reread the application, maybe that might, if that's still in there, he said it was years ago. But, you know, the city closes down 104.
Yeah.
About three times a year. So if anybody should know how to fill out a parade permit on a state highway, it ought to be the city.
For for the record, um, as a trustee, I was, I found out that there was going to be a parade on our park. I was never informed that the village was including this rider or approving anything until I found out at our time, so uh, you know, we were never informed in any of this decision making. And if 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 a decision was made by the board, it was outside of my privy. And it was, if it was, if there was a quorum, it was outside of my. So uh, just for the record, I I was not part of that decision making whatsoever, because I would have my decision would have been, SOFA's made a decision, that's the decision that I would have, I would have thought to go lower than that.
We're not objecting to this group doing it, good for them, really. No, I'm not.
I'm just saying, that would have been my opinion.
Hold on, behind behind this lady's been patiently with her hand out. Keep it simple, please, if you can state. Keep it simple, please. If you can state your name.
The the thing, I'm I'm part of a SOFA committee. My name is Kupka.
Thank you.
K U C K. So you know, we, every year, you're right, we do ask for volunteers, we ask for people from the other community. And this year, we put it out there on our town, we put it up, we put a a big article in the newspaper. We got, I think, three, three takers, three takers. None of them, none of them were the people that are organizing the parade. And so I wonder. Hmm, you're on our town because you're posting SOFA's parade on our, you're obviously on our town. Why don't you, why don't you come and join us then, you know? And I just feel like it was very, um, I was very, very hurt. Not for myself, but for the people that, you know, twenty-five years ago started this committee. To save this wonderful celebration in this beautiful little town. Those are the people I heard for. Pete Hamper, Gus, you know, the real long time members of that committee. That are still working hard in their later years. And yes, I did read in the memo, I did read the mail, that we are an aging committee. We're a group of aging people. And you know, I think when you tell a woman to age, you better look out.
So.
So I didn't take it personal, but you know, I'm still for learning you. Don't don't be calling us age. When we're still in there working as hard as any twenty, thirty, forty year old. And so really, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all of the support. That the SOFA committee was given on a social media website. You're one of those people that tries to give support of us. Thank you so much. And you know, I'm hoping that this month of July will be a great celebration and will be a healthy celebration. And you know, that we can continue to grow this SOFA committee and bring all kinds of people.
Unlike Gus, I I was not in favor of giving Sean a vocal any help whatsoever. Because the reason that SOFA decided not to have a parade was because we were following New York State guidelines. We have the guidelines from June that still state that if you have an event that's got five hundred people or more outside. You have to have a COVID, a negative COVID test, proof of vaccination. You have to social distance. You have to buy a ticket, have a point of entry, and then you have to register at least one person of your group. In case there is an outbreak and they need to. So I was very, I I did not want to have a parade for that reason. I did not want to bring that into our little town. I don't want two or four thousand people on Main Street. Nobody's gonna enforce that. We didn't feel that we could. So now we're gonna have that in our town. Notice what's gonna happen after that. I like to do the grocery store. I like to do the food shop. Now I'm gonna be worried again because this is not over. Now, as a town, you are totally ignoring New York State guidelines and you aren't even offering them insurance. And so I, and I'm a tax payer, I pay my village tax. I didn't know that my village tax would go to take for insurance or something that's not approved by New York State. So that's where I'm, my concerns. And if I had been up to me, I would have never talked to Sean and told him.
So I I want to address the insurance thing because there seems to be some miscommunication about it. We have not added a rider to our insurance. We have not spent an extra penny one towards increasing our insurance. Insurance company has given us guidelines on what to do for third party vendors, et cetera. And so there there is no extension, that not a dollar of anybody's tax money has been spent for a rider. It's the insurance coverage on any event in the village. When when you, and I'm gonna try to separate SOFA versus any event in the village. So when SOFA runs an event for an organization like SOFA, they're they're asking it for insurance as a. Third party showing the village as a a protected interest, okay, for the event. In the case of third party things such as. Uh, I'll try to give an example, the lady that's gonna do the pony ride that I see listed. She's gonna provide us her insurance with the village as a protected agency. We're to collect as many of those as we can for any third party item. If our our village, the village, anytime anybody steps on village property, we're liable. Anytime, I don't, if the when the ban on Saturday nights is at the bandstand, all the community comes down. And and they bring their family and guests and friends from out of town. We're liable for that. Anytime somebody uses the pavilion. Uh, to have a Christmas or a graduation party, a birthday party, uh, or or any such event, we're we're liable for that. That happens all over the village. If they do a march down Main Street, forget it's the parade, march down Main. You know, as long as they have their proper permits and stuff, we're liable.
So you're basically knowingly increasing your liability.
So why are we paying two thousand dollars a year in insurance for SOFA?
Once. Because SOFA SOFA is a not-for-profit organization that runs that event, so as the insurance company will require, you get your third party liability. And 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 showing the village guest. Go ahead, Charlie.
Just a question, if 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 we're, if we can fall under the village umbrella of insurance on village property. That would reduce our expenditure as a volunteer organization. So, you know, I'm not sure if I reviewed correctly, but if the car show needs insurance. But the craft fair doesn't, we spend it on village property, that may be a four or five hundred dollar payday for us, which we would be happy to pay.
And I would be glad to investigate that with our insurance company. The the issue, the not the issue, but from what they explained to me, SOFA is a not-for-profit organization. They carry us C four oh three. Five oh one C three. Thus, if they're sponsoring the event, then they have to provide it. But I'd be glad to sit down with the insurance company.
Because Sean Foco is a private citizen person, she doesn't have to carry that.
That, yeah, they, we we've emailed the insurance company and asked them the question. Is that, am I stating that correct?
Hopefully an important point there, and uh, the point is that. We didn't know about, like, speak for me and maybe Hope, we did not know until Thursday last week, the village was even entertaining. Supporting a parade. And uh, my comment at that meeting, and I may have made the minutes, I have no ideas, but I respect that the people that run SOFA. I don't believe that we as a board should support the parade. Now, that's my opinion, but see, that never came in front of this board. This board never had a discussion of should we support a parade or should we not? We were told last week, Thursday, that we're supporting the parade. Hope, is that correct?
Absolutely. That's what we were told.
We're we're supporting a parade in the sense that. Yeah, absolutely. You know what? Absolutely. So people in the community want to run a parade, we we can, we can, you want to stop the parade?
What about the New York State guidelines?
We're working with the, we're working with the Department of Health on that right now. Because what you described is the festival guideline. We're trying to find out what the difference is between festivals and parade. And we're also trying to find out what we have to do with our public parks during the fireworks. Now, that's a SOFA sponsored event, and everyone says, well, they're all spread out, but the village parks. Now that becomes something we're trying to figure out how we deal with too. Do we close them down? Do we hire security? You know, and and we're asking the Department of Health about that. Because easily five hundred people could gather out at West Barrier Bar to watch the fireworks. Now we lock West Barrier Bar down at dusk. That doesn't mean they can't walk in. That doesn't mean they can occupy. They just can't be parked and can't, what we try to do is prevent people from camp. Broken art too. Stanford Park will be crowded. Forest Park will be crowded. Forest Park, we're trying to figure out what to do there to make sure no one goes on our boardwalk.
It's easier to social distance for the fireworks than it is for half a mile radius parade.
But according to the description though, you have to have access, you have to have tickets, you have to have verification.
Jim, you can sit anywhere. If you go out in a boat in the middle of the water, you can sit anywhere around the bay.
Stop with the boat, you hope. We're talking about our parks and how do we control the parks.
You're narrowing it in on something so ridiculous.
We're narrowing it in on Main Street.
You're you're trying to, you know what you're trying to, you're gaslighting, okay? You're saying if I can't hear my parade, you're not gonna hear your Fourth of July.
No, that's not what I said. I'm saying if 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 you you're you're.
No, that's what you're doing, Jim.
You're pinpointing the parade. They could still have the fireworks. I'm saying what does the village do with our parks?
We're not at the bottom.
You can easily social distance for the fireworks. You could walk away from someone and get six foot away easily. But if you're standing next to somebody at a parade, because you gotta be there because the 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 five boats that you're gonna have. Are gonna be coming down the road. It's it's very difficult to get away from someone when you got Grandma and Aunt Sally all piled up this close. When you got, you know, your fireworks going off up in the sky, you can easily walk away or go out and. Very tall away.
From where?
From where?
Just about everywhere in your life. When you watch fireworks?
No, I'm sitting in the backseat of a car, but not in the middle of the bay. But out in the pier, I've been sitting at home on my porch. There's a lot of places you can watch.
I mean, I'm not saying that we will, but if. I think five hundred people in one bar. You know, that parade, your quarter mile parade, and you're gonna have at least five hundred people or more on property. But fireworks, they're gonna spread out all around.
And and.
Each business has to worry about their own business, their own protocol, then they have to make sure that they are under the five hundred. And you know, whatever, every business will have to do that on their own, as will the town for the parks, apparently. If they give them five hundred people in the park.
So. Yes, agreed. And we're gonna have to figure that out. And and so, because we don't want to cancel the fireworks. We don't want to cancel any of it. But I don't want to cancel the craft fair, and and the craft fair has a little bit better situation. They may be able to produce a game and so forth. It's in a confined space. Someone can count as people come in and out. I don't I don't know what SOFA's plans are for that, but I'm sure you guys are looking into it. And and I and I trust that. I don't need to be here second guessing how you're, you know, controlling the crowded craft fair. Or the same with the car show. I'm sure that someone's working on that. We're working on on this parade. And 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 the dynamics of what's going on in the health department right now is it changes sometimes daily. The last memo we received was if we dated seventy percent, that all restrictions could be, could be, not necessarily they will. Could be, might be, again, you know, I I'm trying not to be politically correct in that aspect because aging offens people. Might be, could be, you know, uh, I think I I think what I'm trying to say is we're 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 monitoring that too. Some of these people know that plug could be pulled at the last.
They're sixty-nine point five percent.
So. You just, you didn't listen to anything I just said.
If it reaches seventy percent, apparently, maybe.
Could be.
Could be.
Possibly.
If it reaches seventy percent, all the spreaders go off. You can have.
There's no restriction.
Seventy percent back to the nation.
And I know that, I understand, I was at one of the meetings where SOFA agonized over what to do with the parade. Charlie knows, and anybody who was at the meeting, I advocated for. Uh, and I advocated for organizing it and 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 then pull the plug if it couldn't happen versus don't organize it. And and I get you guys, again, volunteers, people and 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 so forth. And and I've talked to those folks and said, listen, I want you to think about everything you're doing. And they know from Tuesday's meeting, Walmart was here, the plug could be pulled at the last minute. If if we, if some of these things don't change, and I'm I'm working with the Department of Health on behalf of the village. On what the guidelines really are for parade because Auburn had a Memorial Day parade. Did anybody know?
Thirty-five people turned out.
Did anybody know, what's that?
All thirty-five people turned out.
They held a parade. Did they know that it was only gonna be thirty-five people? Did they know that?
I'm just saying.
You know, I mean, we can be smart.
Historically, historically, our parade attracts thousands of people, Jim. You have to be prepared for that.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So. Anyways.
They might have wanted some money from the village if we could get it.
You'll have to talk to the taxpayers because they were very concerned about whether we spent money on insurance, so. Uh, and and I hope I clear that. And and Charlie, if you want to get together with me later, we can. List up a host of questions based on SOFA being this, what is it, C five?
Five oh one C three.
Five oh one C three and how that works and private property. That's that's definitely a whole different situation. So.
Wow, I mean, the insurance.
What what time next week? Just, sorry.
By five.
Not this week, but next week. So let's get together midweek. I got a meeting tomorrow night, but maybe Wednesday, Thursday, Charlie, we can talk. And we'll come up with questions we can email to the insurance company and 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 see how that's gonna follow. So.
Uh, Terry, can I go through Terry to get the schedule or should I just call you direct?
You need to call, yeah, Terry, yeah, call me direct. My schedule's on my phone. Yeah.
Yes. Prepare this last week. Um, first of all, I told this for SOFA. I had gone here there for ten years. And I was kind of thinking back from starting our meeting. My question, and everybody I don't know that I agree with. Is SOFA did not prepare for fireworks or a parade or a job? Where is all these people in those towns? Have that been taken out? It's not up to SOFA to make care of this, that they need to be taken care of, but they're not. Walking into my property, because I'm here there, I'm in my yard.
We only, we only had bathrooms for Valentine's Day.
There are, and some of those people do not.
Well, but we can't, I can't force them.
Right, some of them depend on porta johns that were put in place in the village. But for a craft fair, you're not gonna have that many compared to what we give a twelve block.
So.
So I just want you to think about.
We'll have the standard porta johns that we normally, that the village supplies. There's only two additional ones we're putting up at the park, and I think there's been some conversation because usually SOFA puts them all up at the.
We got five extra porta johns. Okay.
We just put a bathroom at the municipal parking.
There'll be one at the new supply lot. That was an added one after a couple of years ago.
That that'll be there. There'll be two more out here in case of. Uh, they have whatever the horse. So, and there'll be two down in the craft fair. And you.
We're gonna.
You're gonna service them Saturday and Sunday, or Friday and Saturday.
Right.
Right, yeah. So they will be there. Uh. So we'll have porta johns. Now, if you're gonna use them, I can't figure why. It's up to them. So, but they'll be there.
The village, so the people know, the village also provides security for the event, for Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Uh, some of that security we won't have to do. We'll have some Thursday night up at the Church Street Pavilion. And we'll have it for Saturday down at the. And we'll have it for Saturday down at the Children's Park because we usually have concerns with a number of people and using the village public restrooms, which usually close at dusk, but they'll close at ten, they'll close at ten.
Well, I have security in the village by.
Right.
Right.
Right, which you guys, which SOPA normally does. So it really sounds like SOPA and the village and the community are working together. Would you say hi?
Just got a lot of negative thoughts because we could not put on this parade, but then this person did it. Maybe for eight and we just put it together within a month. They could have done it. I can't count that they were.
I I think, I think the decision that is made back in, what was that, in February or March? March.
Okay.
I was at the March meeting. I guess I didn't get the invitation.
Probably.
It was later than that, May next.
We started talking about can we or can we not? Because everything was just at that point. So let's delay a month. Let's delay another month. Let's delay another month. We finally had to pull the trigger.
Yeah, I think that last decision was made April or May. We were giving up.
May.
Hoping we could do it.
If I can just address that issue just for a second, it was so difficult to make a decision because everyone was delaying. Everyone was trying to get to the last minute before they had to make a decision. We lost, we lost our carnival guy. I mean, because he just couldn't afford. I mean, his business was gonna go out of business because he couldn't under the guidelines, he couldn't do it. Alright, and he delayed for the last minute. We lost a food vendor. We can't sell beer. I mean, we, they would get six thousand dollars in our budget, in beer money. And we can't sell beer. So, it was terrible role to wait and decide, oh yeah, I'm sure it was probably later in April, early May, you know, he decided that he can't do it. He's another puzzle, just hard coming to get.
Knowing that it's forty-five. Knowing that it's race forty-five.
It's important for us, it's important.
Yes.
Can I state my name now?
It always helps, but in case she doesn't recognize your voice.
You know, I I think, you know, what I've what I've experienced is that there's there's becoming a real divide in the people in this community. You know, and it's so sad because we wouldn't be living here if we didn't love it here. None of us would, right? And I would just really hate to see that something like this during a pandemic is going to create so much animosity of people against people. So I really love it, you know, if the mayor could maybe come out with a statement, a public statement. You know, that really, you know, celebrates SOPA and the contribution to SOPA that makes this community. And how we were up against some really hard things. And then there had one person on this committee that didn't want to have Fourth of July full force this year. We don't, we don't donate all of our time and our energy and forfeit our own Fourth of July celebrations with our families. Because we don't wanna do it, right? And so I think that there really needs to be some, you know, to compare to this community. Um, because right now, it's ugly. I think it's ugly, you know, I I don't even wanna get on social media or anything. Because it it's just not, just doesn't feel good. And this is a feel-good kind of place. And we need to do something to bring that back around.
There's nobody on this board that doesn't appreciate SOPA. Okay.
No, I know that. But I I think right now, it's just.
Oh, yeah.
It's out there.
Oh, yeah, it's out there. But it's not covered from up.
I will take that recommendation under advisement. If you see, when I post up on Charahaven, our town, I never respond to comments. Literally, I I post information, whether people like the information or not. I just give them what I know to be as factual as possible. And then when, if they rip it apart or they don't like it or, because that just fuels that, that fuel. Everyone, alright?
Yep.
Wasn't better credit, yeah. So. So, but I will try to draft something up to post and and do that. I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I I've gone to the SOPA meetings. I know how hard the team works.
I I just wanna add, you know, like last week, I I thought that way myself. I felt like, you know, I I just think it's a sign of the times. Our whole nation has just become so divided. And when someone gets a no or an answer, they don't care. They're gonna get a yes one way or another. Even when they've been told no, they're gonna go hunt and do it anyway. And that's what I feel like happened here. And I feel like it was disrespectful to someone. And I'm sorry that that happened. But we're gonna make the best of it. And hopefully, this research will be lifted and we will get to some time, we will have a great parade. If there's no, absolutely no way it would be a great, if it's SOPA branded, it'll definitely not be a mile long. Probably all the upwards, maybe twenty votes should get together, but hey, give her credit for the way her credits do. You know, and and let them see how hard it is, what you guys do every year, putting together a bunch of people and the coordination effort that goes into it. But, you know, we put our best effort every year to do what we can and make it having great. I hope it doesn't stop, come back and slap us in the face and make a bunch of people sick. And our best is our hometown because we suffer bad frost. I pray that doesn't happen. And I, and that would be the worst case scenario. We're gonna prepare for worse with our rider and pray for the best. I I really do. I think it's a sign of the times. People just won't take no for an answer and they do what they want anyway. And it's just really kind of too bad.
Who are you referring to? Let's, let's.
I'm talking about the committee that went and set up the parade anyway. Even after they were told no.
We're not just looking back on that. Uh, we've invited them to join. I'll be stunned if they do.
Right. I've always said if you build it, they will come. And I think people see what it takes.
We're pleased that they would join us.
Right.
Because we need more people. I don't think it will ask, but I hope so.
I I I do too. I, if if you can get two or three, four quality people out of that group of ten or twelve, that may be four quali- four quality people that you'll have for a long term.
I'd be happy with two.
I I'm not sure how to say this.
Hopefully they're young.
Well, I wasn't gonna say that. I was gonna say age appropriate. I don't know, you can't say. But I, you know, hopefully there'll be people that can carry on that tradition. And if they are people with families, their children will see them doing it. And maybe they'll see an obligation to help out when they get older or they're, I mean, that's all how it works is your children see what your parents do and then they try to follow suit, so.
Hopefully.
Any anything else? Charlie? Talk Wednesday? Talk Wednesday?
All I know is I went to the bathroom one meeting and the next thing I knew I was president.
That'll teach ya.
Alright. Alright, and and anything else on the SOPA and the, what's going on there? What what we're at, we're. I know. We can skip the rest of the meeting.
Stan has been complaining to a lot about my property, about the stop of my property. He's not a resident. And the first thing is he claimed that they want to pay him too much. I promise he is for day, anybody in the board. I just, you know, invite this. That's, I paid with my personal money. I paid with my personal money. I talked about, I did all of the things that were done so correctly as a revenue business. Is it, with with Chris saying, yeah, what would you? You might speak to the board. What's the best sign up for the lives meeting? Like, is this a public forum? You speak for, you know, what you can say. And you'll speak to the board. Get signed up.
Well, we've been. Are you getting cold?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll let everybody slide in.
Four.
Something's in the way.
Yeah. We care.
Chair. Why don't we ask? Well, let's have those folks step out when we close the door. We'll have to deal with that actor. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just shut it. Let's get through a couple of things here. Alright, it's late. We're gonna just go through a couple of items and then we're gonna, if the board wants it, we can close the meeting and pick it up.
But you don't wanna hear from.
Where did Hope go?
She went through that.
We don't wanna hear from the parade. How could we not want to hear from the parade? Alright. Oh my gosh.
I don't think it's gonna.
Okay, so review and approve meeting minutes, April twelfth, May sixth, and May tenth.
I review them. I would be promoted to include them this present.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. A second.
Discussion here?
Yes.
Here we are at April twelfth meeting again. This is regarding the Ready Project. I I'm trying to understand about the hostman here unfortunately.
Should be right up.
We, we have. I gotta do the same thing.
Not hard, okay.
No, I'd just like to bring up, on the meeting minutes of April twelfth, this regarding the Ready Project. Five times, and you don't add a loss at this whole thing. And I think the biggest thing I got a loss is how we as a board have three different outcomes. In other words, I believe, uh, Trustee Dunaway and Mayor Vasile were in favor of all the projects. I believe Holt was totally opposed to the Turtle Cove slash King Street project. Anybody can correct me if I'm wrong in this whole statement. And Walt and myself were opposed to the, or we're looking for more information on Turtle Cove project. But wanted to move forward on the K Street project. But yet in the voting resolution, we had all five of us in favor of it. So I'm trying to understand how we can have three different outcomes from the trustee. And yet the resolution is all in favor of. It just doesn't add up to me. I'm understanding, trying to understand what's wrong with this. I'm not understanding. We had this discussion last month and we're still saying standpoint. So if somebody could explain to me how we could all be in favor rather than. We had two on one side of the fence, two on the other side of the fence, and one a definite no.
Did you have enough in favor?
So it says, it says here, if I'm reading this right, Chris. It was with the, with the exception of the Turtle Cove, King Street project, and Truda said, uh, which, let's see, that leaves Forest Park, Stamford, any companies out, Cottage Street, Lake Street Extension, and Westbury Bar. So those are the the five projects in this, if this last sentence reads right, with all but Turtle Cove portion of King Street.
But then it goes, it starts off by saying the Westbury Bar project will be separate from the first five projects.
Westbury Bar.
The Westbury Bar project will be separate from the first five projects. Then it goes, uh.
Well, it is, it bid wise, it's gonna be separate.
A motion by the movie project, we western, following both sides of those five stand favor, big street, Westbury. Zero opposed, zero abstention, and zero add. So I don't, I don't know why I'm not understanding there.
We agree to move forward with all but Turtle Cove.
Part of the King Street.
And and actually, I think that was, so it's before the whole King Street project happened. Because it was a combined force. And what was your take on that?
Um. I don't know. Aren't we having a meeting on it next week?
The twenty-second.
Uh, yeah. I don't want anything to do with either.
That's what I thought you said. And I think you've expressed that a couple of times.
Yeah.
With either.
Ready, or with either King Street or Turtle Cove.
That's what I thought you said.
First of all, King Street because of potential litigation. Secondly, Turtle Cove because there's nowhere to pop. And then that's just gonna add to the problem. Already exists, no parking. You know, because you can't get the parking lot. So in my opinion, why even do that when you can't get the parking lot? So why even go with that?
We, yeah, we can have some more discussion.
So I, so I say, who moved to both? But we're talking about what happened back then.
Back.
Oh, back then, right. Who moved to both? If you listen to it, what was that? But now you're changing. Right, so, okay, so initially, I just said no to Turtle Cove. And that's what the vote was, yeah.
The yes vote is a no vote, is that what you're saying, Paul?
Yes.
The yes vote.
Correct.
So that was, and I think we all agreed to move forward with everything but the King Street slash Turtle Cove project. We were gonna meet, we set up a separate meeting on the 22nd, which may not be in here, or may came up at a later date, review that. But the five projects, although Westbury Bar is gonna be a separate project, I think the, the content and extent of that was, it's just gonna be separate. It's gonna use different kinds of factors. That's, that's what we, which is basically. Okay, so on Hope's line here, she wants to move forward with all the projects, and does want the way of Turtle Cove. What is that?
But was that said way back then?
Yes.
It was, yes. When I listened to it, that's what, yeah. So I, I mean, I can change it, that's how, yeah.
Well, what?
Oh, you got the record. No, no, we're good, we're gonna have another meeting at it. Yeah, right, yeah, so we're talking about. Yeah, yeah.
So there's a motion and four are very clear.
And a second.
Any further discussion?
A second. Hold on.
I think what it reflected was the idea to revisit that project, and then we came up with a date over that project. And, and it didn't go all this far to get back, because there's still some changes to the name, names of the teams.
Right.
Launch itself. And we're gonna summarize those out in a second. All that kind of detail was in there, I think that's how we get a bit of a guess.
Okay.
You know, if that.
It wasn't about reading any.
No, we're not.
Right, right, but just we were gonna go for.
The Ready Projects that we all. I think it may not sound or read that way, but it's, but the Turtle Cove. And of course, King Street's impacted by that. Winding, while winding the rain up. That we never finished talking about, right?
Right.
And that, and the engineer, rather than having to spend more money doing it, help them come to this meeting on the 22nd, and make those fine tweaks. Whether with or without. Does that make sense as to why we all have to vote? I mean, it was yes. It's been awkward, it's been two months, and kind of under what happened two months ago. After the.
Oh, wow. And the number of what decided on a contract a year ago. You're Asian or?
Asian.
All right, we have a.
You have a, you have a motion, you have a second?
Yep. We'll have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. May, that was just for April 12th. No.
My vote was for all of them.
What it was for?
Oh, yeah.
I missed that, I thought. Well, then that's fine, I'm good with that too, that's what it's for, unless it was.
It was.
Unless there was any discussion there. Actually, I liked all that, it's still on stage, you get, I liked. Okay, I guess, I'm just checking, everyone's fine with that. All right. Abstract, abstract number one, general fund, fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Water fund, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Trust and agencies, ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. CDBG blood grant, thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cent. And payroll was thirty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cent. Can I have a motion to accept abstract number one vouchers as stated?
I'll make that motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. End of year, general fund budget modifications, transfer. You already did, go ahead.
All of the people, they complained about being old, so, you know, try to buy you, if you want to.
Three minutes, Fred.
Okay, I, no, I don't think a minute to half. Hey, I do third with it, is it okay?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, thanks.
Try to be accountable.
We had our meeting over today, we had thirty-nine people there that day, and it rained like the son of a gun, and you do have links to that. We all involved. Okay, and so what we did, we discussed our trip, which we are doing tomorrow, with Lawrence and Glenn Curtis, uh, in Amisport. And, uh, there we got that, and also our next meeting will be June seventeenth, it's Thursday, you got that in the books, right, Jerry? Okay, all right, and then we also are making plans for our annual campaign, uh, which we'll have at the beginning here, instead of paying a hundred bucks to be able to save part of the road, go here. And also, I just got, I finally got it all, Stewart's Ice Cream, we are gonna get three gallons of vanilla ice cream with all the packaging. Hey, then last year, of course, we couldn't handle it for a few years. Finally got a whole.
When is your picnic?
Thursday, it would be, uh, July fifteenth, one o'clock, or noon. Neither because you have.
That's in, that's in new?
No.
Well, it's like six.
I've stopped by. We tried to get about sixty, sixty-five, eighty. I won't take too much time. All right, and then we're about to start our month, I think it's on the.
Oh, good.
We'll be doing that at the Legion. Uh, that should start, I think, in August, I think we got a part of Memorial, Thursday. And gee, that should fall out there. I ran through it real quick, I had some other things I wanted to tell you, but.
You're the best, right? And I hope you're feeling better.
We're glad to see you're feeling better.
And one of those, I had to hold others. But anyways, thanks for getting that, I'm here. Thank you, Fred. And thank you guys for what you do for the community, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
We're getting old, you know, we're aging.
What are you saying, old, aging, you know, how do you describe that? Exactly. Thanks, Fred. End of year, general fund budget modifications, transfer eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand fifty-eight cents of building's equipment capital outlay, the building's contractual, transfer a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents from ambulance equipment, three thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-four cents from ambulance meds and supplies, comma, two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars fifty-seven, seven cents from parks contractual to the ambulance contract. Transfer three hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents from parks contractual to emergency community center contract. They have a motion to accept the general fund budget modification, these are the end of year modifications that make it a new year off.
I made the motion.
I'll start it. Any further discussion? And, and I, I'm guessing that the three and the two on the transfer from ambulance, was that?
Yeah, we had to take it out of free places. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Because I did have to take it out of ambulance hurt, and then, oh, it hurts the rest of the.
Okay. End of year, water fund budget modifications, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
End of year, water fund budget modifications, transfer fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents from source and supply equipment to water administration contractual, one thousand two hundred and forty dollars and twenty-six cents from source of water, supply equipment transmission and distribution, personal services, transfer nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents from source of supply equipment capital outlay to transmission and distribution, and transfer four thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents from source of supply contractual to transmission and distribution contractual. And I have a motion to accept the end of year water fund budget modification as stated.
I'll make that motion to accept the water fund budget modification, it's gotta be your as stated.
Second.
Any further, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move. Committee reports, uh, DPW, May DPW report, and submitted by Roger Graniter, DPW and water report, and I have a motion to accept the report.
I make that motion to accept the DPW and water report as stated.
Everybody should have that on Thursday, that evening?
Yep.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, trans, treasures report for period ending five thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one, general fund, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, including West Barrier Bar at three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents, water fund at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents, trust and agencies, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, New York Main Street grant, one thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents, CDBG one dollar, and I have a motion to accept the treasures report submitted by the clerk to end of year.
I'll make that motion to accept the treasures report as stated.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was, okay. Thank you, May ambulance report submitted by Stan Krowzik, can I have a motion to accept the May ambulance report?
I'll make that motion to accept the May ambulance report.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move. May code enforcement report submitted by Stan Krowzik. Have a motion to accept the code enforcement report?
I'll make that motion to accept the code enforcement report.
Can I have a? Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, Jim, I'd just like to go on record for statement that I think, you know, we've discussed some concerns with Stan. Seemed very lax in trying to bring up the attrition. And I think that we as a board really need to look closely at that. We may have to go on an executive discussion to discuss that.
Okay. So, that's a separate issue, but that's, that's fine. So all in favor of the code enforcement report?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
What, uh, did you get?
There was no in there?
That's a no, yes, I'm.
Okay, thank you, unfinished business. Is, is, do we wanna rattle down through each of these, or is there any one particular one anybody wants to talk about, we talked about them off Thursday?
The only one I wanted to bring up was the Toma about, um, Keywares, paving, make sure we follow through on that, the, the parking spot. There's a rental property there, I mean. Please. Um, that's all I had. Oh, and then if we were gonna sign that resolution on the Purple Heart.
Okay, let's, let's do that while, while it's being discussed.
I have a question, so what about the parking, what, what was it about?
So we had to investigate, so the parking, it, and I think it's more of a planning board thing than it was, no?
Oh, it was a ZBA thing, I know what you're talking about now, well.
Hold on.
It was, as part of the Main Street grid, in order for them to add another habitational unit.
Okay.
They had to have, we think, an additional parking space that normally is.
Yes.
Which, which would have been required based on zoning the plan, and the grant is for the work inside, I'm not sure the parking was covered.
The ZBA had something with it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, so something with Toma would need to follow through, making sure that that parking spot was added as far as the grant agreement.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Because it is an agreement, it is in the.
In the grant, in the grant.
But it wasn't followed through.
No, it was not.
I don't know whether it was or not, whether a grassy area can be considered a parking spot or not.
For some reason, I thought ZBA or whatever, is it paid, I don't know.
I thought, I believe it was paid, because I, I believe, uh, Hamphred's had it handed in there, there's paid.
That's a, that's a ZBA thing, right?
I don't know that they had to have it paid, I think they just, for Hamphred's, I thought it was just, make sure, yeah, but I'll check with, uh, with Rich. I might have already sent him an email from Thursday's meeting, but I'll double check.
Okay, um, let's do this, the Purple Heart, well, let's do this. Do you have anything else on, Hope, you're all set there?
I just have one more thing, um, that was brought up to me last night, I got a text from village resident. Uh, it was about nine-thirty, and Brandon's Pub was jamming, boom, ba-ba-boom, the bass, the bass, like, really loud, nine-thirty on a Sunday night. They went over and asked Brandon to please turn it down, and they were told, no, we're gonna continue to play the music until ten o'clock, all summer long, it's, it's my right. He had like eight, no more than eight customers in the restaurant, band was playing outside. My thinking is, okay, there may be a ton of clock ordinance, but there's people that live on Main Street, it's a Sunday evening, these people have to get up and go to school in the morning, children, you know, little ones, and families, you know, out of respect for your neighbors, bring the band inside, Brandon, there's people, they have to work in the morning, there's eight people in the bar, in the restaurant, bring the band inside, and show respect for the neighbors. There are residents that live on Main Street, I know we want to accommodate our restaurants and our, and our businesses, but our residents are important too, so I mean, and I, I want to, you know, I know it's ten o'clock curfew, you know, but on a Sunday night, you know, at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, enough is enough.
It wasn't just him, I mean, it wasn't each hip, uh, music out on their deck and, you know, outside, it was like, I mean, not me later than that.
So I'm, I'm not sure that there is actually a curfew.
I, I didn't know there was.
It's must have been that late.
They were Sunday night, they needed to count it first, and then I don't know.
So, yeah, I, I think that standard, we, a lot of places tone it down at eleven, yep, um, I don't know that, I don't think that there is a, a curfew set in the Village of Ferry Island, and then if we're gonna set curfews, and we gotta figure out about enforcement, generally in my neighborhood, even the rental people that are here for the summer are told, whether it's a weeknight or not, or, or Sunday, eleven o'clock, and, uh, you know, when I, I live next door rental.
Talking about rental people, we're talking about residents, full time, year-round residents.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about rental pe, rental properties on the water, next to full year-round residents. You know, all summer, we listen to, you know.
Them raising hell.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're there for, for the summer, but most of them generally are, I mean, yeah, they get up every day at four-thirty, so sometimes it's tough.
Well, I just say, you know, out of, out of respect for his neighbors, you know, we would tone it down, I guess, not, I, I, I would think as a business owner, he would know, you know, he's going to either make or break it with his local customers, so, he'll treat them, I guess, as he chooses, it's his choice.
I guess it'd be great if, if that group in the community, as the ATV people.
Sure.
Came here and said, we don't like the ATV noise, I guess them people should probably come here and say, we don't like.
I guess it's not gonna make a difference though, because, you know, as Jim just said, there's, you know, it is what it is, so.
It's not what I said, and you keep interpreting, I said, I don't think we have an ordinance for noise. And the trustees developed a laws for the village.
And he's basically said, you know, at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, too bad.
I always thought there was a clause in the town, the village was the only ordinance that was based so good.
Right, he said it would org.
Yep.
So put, put, put. So, put, put, put that to calling somebody, because we don't have our own law enforcement, and interpreting that statement when they're that vague and raw. But we can have discussion with the people that are here, or we can try to have discussion amongst the board.
I worked on the pieces where you have the curfew at five.
So, I, I have not seen that in writing. I've asked a number of times over, because it comes up all the time about a curfew. There's a curfew for youth.
Youth, ten o'clock.
And, and, and not me, but I have not heard of, look at her.
I don't know. I don't know.
Would you, Terry, could you please pull our noise ordinances out or anything like that?
Do I agree now?
No, you could pull it out now while we talk. Is that a code?
I don't know, is it zoning or code?
I don't know.
Is it zoning or code? Is it based in good order? I think that's zoning, right?
We don't have a constable or anything.
Exactly.
How does that sound though? It's all about the base, about the base.
It's all about the base. I couldn't, I couldn't hear it. I mean, I know.
I listen to coloquies all week.
I was going to say, I'm tired of my manifying, I need to hear Brian right now. We've got to get away from the school in the morning. And you can hear it, you can't wait down, it's not made in chat.
And yet Saturday night. Saturday night it gets real loud.
I mean, it's not like he's got a bar of people, these people in there, you know.
I slept through the thunderstorm last night.
Turn it down a little.
I slept through it. I don't know, I heard.
While Terry's looking that up, since it's in recording, we can keep going. Anything else, or she'll bring that back to us?
Well, I, I, I'm just saying out of, I mean, if, if we did come up, I, I, I can see Friday, Saturday nights. I understand, Friday, Saturday night, that's, that's a given, you know. People are going to be out and about. But, you know, on a Sunday night, you know, I, it's just, I feel like it's more of a respect for your neighbor thing, you know. I mean, he lives out in this great big house where all he's, all he hears is the peepers at night. Not everybody uses Fortuna to tea. Some people have to rent a how, a, a, an apartment on Main Street. Show some respect for people that are, it's a fortunate issue.
I don't know if it's in here or not, but it's in good order.
Scan for time. Adult cabaret? Adult motel? Adult motion pictures?
Don't.
Adult theater, adult use of establishments?
As a side note, I got a call about the, from Stanley, the jazz band. And, and we are going to get some funding, but not as much as he anticipated, okay? The first one, we're going to get fifty percent of it paid for, but the second one, maybe only twenty-five percent paid for. I said, well, we anticipated the worst, planned for the full funding, so anything we get is appreciated. So I said, I'm sure that we're still going to have the money in the budget, so we're going to probably move forward. But I'll talk to the board and just give them the heads up, so I said.
Definition on that?
So we're still on board for those shows.
You going to be in case?
The ones that we booked with them.
Oh.
They're, they're, they're so good to call.
Oh, okay.
I still think they should have a top of the band concert that they can stand.
Maybe by then.
I think we have asked their decision.
Well, he said he came up and checked out the, the venue.
That's our decision.
He said he checked out the venue and then he was asking me how the bands usually line up, you know, settle.
So there, there is a, there is a timeframe for public property? Ten PM to five AM?
So, okay, so ten PM.
Public property?
But that's all private, that's his business property, right? She was, if they were outside. That would be like parks and places.
And that's why they stop at ten o'clock. Wouldn't have a band?
Oh, because it's from ten to five.
Yes.
Yeah. That is public property.
So ten, ten to five AM, a public property, but I don't know if it's on his.
It's private.
I could feel the face at my house.
Last night.
I'm not that far away, I mean, I don't know where the place is.
Yeah, but I.
Disorderly conduct and disturbing the peace? And you can't do that between twelve midnight and six AM? Those are the only times.
There's nothing in there, it's for free, there's nothing in there, is there?
Ten to, ten to, ten to five AM on public properties. And then there's, and this is on, and I briefly, I'm going through this, I mean, I'm. Disorderly conduct, disturbance of the peace is between twelve midnight and six AM. Of course, that might fall under disturbance of the peace. So that's a quick, quick scan, but we can send that out. Now, anybody's welcome to look at these and if they want to make a modification or something, I mean, we can do that. I do, I do it all the time, and stuff to present to you guys, the board, things that I see.
I don't think there was a good thing in there.
Generally, it's not, I haven't seen it to be, and this is just me, I haven't seen it to be something that's a chronic issue.
You're cloistered in that beautiful place.
Yes, no. No. Right down there on the bay, far away from all the noise.
We listened, we listened to coloquies.
We listened to coloquies.
And those speedboats coming back and forth.
Yeah, that's.
We opened them up the other day.
We be, we're not cloistered on the bay.
Yeah. We, yeah.
They run right by you from, they run right by you.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're going over to.
So, you know.
And it, right, PB and coloquies. And they're all from Elsweeville, and they don't have any stake in this community or coming at all. They're not even locals. They're all coming from Elsweeville, they're speedboats. And three or four at a time, and they all know where the cops are and aren't, and they communicate with each other. Don't go too fast, there's a.
We used to have the walkie-talkies in the car, ten-four, rubber duck. That copper on three seventy.
Anything else? No.
No. Just Brandon's on my nerves tonight.
I guess. Walter? No, I don't hear any. Chris? Judy, on any of these items? I think the. She had all that time while she was listening to Hope.
Well, I didn't know we were going to not go through.
Well, I just thought we'd just, just the unfinished business, because we've talked about them. We kind of know the status. The fifteen mile an hour speeding, I think we.
No, we don't need to talk about that.
We're going to scratch that.
Scratch it.
The covert request. The covert request, we need it revised because it says modular home.
Yeah.
Do, do you do a covert request before the house?
I think the built.
You know, it's, you know, it's just to be a.
So anybody that has a piece of property can put a covert driveway in before a structure to access.
Before a structure.
Before the, you know, to access their property.
Okay. But right now, the house goes behind it to get, is there something there now?
I, I don't know the legalities of what, what their right of ways are or whatever, but this person has property on Cuba Street and would like their own private access to the property.
That is how we access.
Versus the joint shared access that, there could be some legal things there that I don't know, so.
So if they want it to end.
Yeah. It's just the way they, the verbiage in the request doesn't meet what our zoning is, so. We don't want to sound like we were approving not only the access, but if you go back later and say, wait a second, you said, you know, modular homes or whatever, as well as. Maniac.
Maniac.
Alright. I'm, I'm good with everything else. Let's do this resolution, and then we can do new business if we have to. So, in the, in the speed of time. Has everybody read this? Generally, I read them out.
Oh.
I know.
Okay.
We said nothing to us to know it.
I know, I'm, I'm asking the board, usually we read them.
I have read it and committed it to memory.
Oh, no.
I, I've read it. I've had it read and I've had it proofread by two individuals.
Chris?
I've read it, I mean, I don't see anything that's.
Alright. If everybody's good, we'll, resolution to proclaim the Village of Fairhaven a Purple Heart Village. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution that you all have in front of you as presented? I, we've had this at the Thursday agenda meeting too, so you had the weekend to review. So can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the Purple Heart Village.
Hoping we could have Hope.
I know. I was going to say, I'm going to sack any motion.
No, I want you to.
I'm going to motion to accept it. Second.
There you go.
Second.
We can't walk right out, that's what we. Okay? We need to take a roll call.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Craylon.
Yes.
Trustee Donaway.
Yes.
Trustee Droge.
Yes.
Trustee Boydowitz.
Yes.
Mayor Vassil.
Yes. So, so moved. Okay. Let's go to new business. Again, I guess we tried to set up a June workshop, we'll probably have to do a July workshop. Or August, no, we said September, didn't we, at the last meeting?
We're going to drop off cars at that too.
But weren't, there was a discussion today.
Resolution regarding the labor compliance officer. That's an important issue.
We're going to September?
All of this.
Yes, we've got to do that. Yep.
I've read through that.
So the, the compliance officer resolution, which this was provided to us by Toma, it's all part of the CDVG grant funding.
A compliance officer? Do I have that?
We had it Thursday. Labor compliance officer.
It came through, check with Alia, but I, and this was.
I have not seen Alia.
You'll see her tomorrow.
I got it.
And this came, this all came from Toma as part of the CDVG grant and so forth. I mean, they provided the language, and the person who in their company is going to be the compliance officer is this Linda, Linda Armstrong, that's a good name to have for that. And, and it's going to be her responsibility to make sure that.
I remember this now.
Okay.
Yep.
So without me reading the whole resolution, in, in the spirit of time, we are going to re, vote on the resolution designating a labor compliance officer for the CDVG funded flood remediation project. Can I have a motion to accept, a, a motion to move forward this resolution?
Yes, Judy. I'll make a motion that we move forward with this compliance officer.
I'll sack it.
Hope's second? Roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Craylon.
Yes.
Trustee Donaway.
Yes.
Trustee Droge.
Yes.
Trustee Boydowitz.
Yes.
Mayor Vassil.
Yes.
That's what we had to do.
We, yeah, we did, as part of our, part of the requirements for that. And they provided all the documents. Yeah, I got to figure out how to close that door. So we did talk about a September deal. Do we want to try to put something at least in the agenda then? And have a copy of the ATV route, so we're not waiting until September? That came up earlier in the meeting, can we at least get the maps?
Let's have it for next month.
At least on the agenda.
The map is very simple anyways.
Exactly.
It has little settings.
And, and if there's any chance we can get that map out sooner via an email with an attachment, that way.
I think we have a description. We've had, we've had a couple of descriptions over the years.
A worded description and not a map?
Right.
Well, let's take the worded description and then maybe I'll get a copy of a map and try it highlight.
Yeah, I think we just have a worded description of the streets. Okay. I, I can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So let's add, let's make sure that's on July's agenda.
I got it.
And we'll work on the, whatever the latest description was and so forth.
Yeah, because I, I've seen just even over, on one of the side streets, people putting up signs, no ATVs. Or, you know, yeah, because people just don't, they don't want them. They're coming on the side streets, so they put up signs to keep them away. They shouldn't have to do that.
Do we have to discuss the, the drive answers or something?
We, absolutely can.
Why don't we have to?
We already have.
Well, just that we're, we're working with the health department and the health department could poke a plug on this thing and Sean O'Callaghan was painfully aware of that reminder again. I'm, I did talk, I didn't talk to Eileen O'Connor today, I left her a message to see. I, I didn't know if we hit the seventy percent mark or not.
We're sixty-nine, nine point five, according to the news.
And, and the reason I called was because if you saw the news report, the city of Chicago on Friday lifted all restrictions. Now, the city of Chicago.
Syracuse, just going on the Hall of Fame State Fair.
Three, three.
Yeah.
They what?
They're, the whole state fair is going to go on, yes.
Hundred percent.
Yep, hundred percent. Anadaga County is the lowest in the nation for COVID.
Yep.
And seventy percent was the target, so they've already done that.
Yeah, yeah.
They just put Chicago, one point five million people.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
So.
We have the state fair.
We've had a lot more on campus this.
Do you have anything more we need to talk about there, Chris?
We're just going through the list and trying to get.
You got to stop, see?
Here's my language.
Okay. I will keep people posted.
I wouldn't have stopped.
You said you would, but that's not enough. No, because we want to learn anything with it. Even if he just dropped down and he gave it to me.
Okay. And anything else for new business, Hope?
Um, no, not, I mean, I, I would like to think about looking at a, a, a code for time, time that bands can play and the noise level. Maybe think about looking at that. I know it's unpopular.
Turn it over to planning board?
Maybe have the planning board take a look at it. Bring it up to them, maybe they could get it around. See what other tourists do, the villagers do with your own residents. Maybe get some feedback from the residents. I know that it's got to keep them awake at night. You know?
Levels of vans. But if it's only ten o'clock.
We don't know that right now, technically, if you read that at a quick glance, it's midnight.
Yeah, yeah. Be even later. Yep. And I mean, only ten o'clock on a Sunday night? That's bordering on late, especially with little ones. I mean, look at Brittany, she's got two little ones over there. I mean, sleep like a worm. I know my boys didn't. You know, and I was the single mom working two child, you know, working, going to school, you know. I mean, it wasn't easy raising the boys, you know.
Can we intertwine this then with the snowmobile issue?
Sure.
I think it's the same, right? ATV snowmobile.
The road is the same and the problem is the same.
Yeah, it's, because the snowmobiles are a management.
Okay. No, I, I, I was assuming it was, but again, I have to revisit the map. I'll, I'll re, you know, I, I don't know whatever, but when I see them in the village and stuff, or there are some places that I think they, because they did put their ATV signs up, I stop and say something. I'm a resident too, I'm not. I live here and, you know, I don't know if Wildwood was on it, because when I lived in the greenhouse, they used to go screaming by there at one o'clock in the morning.
I was supposed to go on, it wasn't right.
Well, I don't know how to get up to the, I don't know why they went that way to State Park.
I don't know.
But, yeah, oh, yeah, they used to scream that wild.
I don't know if there's any room there.
I don't either, that's why, but I was like, huh, okay.
Five of them went past one town.
Yep, all right.
Sixty miles an hour.
It's one in the same, we'll go through that. So, uh, you folks have been here, anything? Final comments, final comments?
Um, personal preference, um, open and to you personally, I apologize for the angst that I felt and disway about the water.
No apology necessary, but thank you, I mean, this is a very sensitive, emotional topic.
On a lighter subject, new business, back burner, after everything else was calmed down, I would love.
Twenty twenty-three.
No. No, the mighty after that, because well, it's not going, never, never expect until twenty twenty-three. Um, no, I would love to have the village look into the possibility, feasibility of making a microgrid in this community. I saw an SEC, and I much understood what that meant, what that stood for, but there was a webinar on YouTube, and they go through how local governments are raising the bar as far as sustainability. And these microgrids, which they go into great detail on, is a very good example of something that we could probably do here in Fairhaven. And I say that especially because the lights flicker every time the wind blows. It just went out a couple of days ago, they would, they flickered yesterday during thunderstorm. And I just think that because we're so dense, we have a nice little arrangement for the village, that a microgrid might be very feasible for us, and it might be something to draw people to us.
We can put that on the agenda, I can.
I mean, we're talking, we're in here as well.
I haven't been here that long, I've only been in the village since two thousand and one.
Well, I've been here since eighty-eight, and it's been a, I mean, actually, they updated, they, um, upgraded the infrastructure for electrical between the time that I first came here and I think the late nineties, so there is improvement.
They, I think they went through about two thousand and seven or eight and did another upgrade, because I used to, if, if the wind, my lights would go out, but it doesn't.
It was good down for quite some time, but now it's bad again.
And, and I would say that, was it last night we had the thunderstorm? That was pretty rough.
It's going out.
Trees were down, I get the, you know, the calls on the nine-one-one.
We probably could, it can be very, very brief, but we've been getting on the average of two or three, sometimes a week, lips.
Oh, four, yes.
Yeah, easily.
Jeez.
Three or four times a day.
I'm not experiencing, I'm not experiencing that.
I'm, I'm on the late, first revitalization committees.
No, she's talking about right now.
I'm talking about lately, it's been bad, lately's been bad.
Sterling and. Lot of lips, all the time, sometimes it's blue.
Cuba County.
When it comes to a gun.
So I'll, I'll bring that up in our next community.
Can you imagine?
Yeah.
Each time RGE gets cut, we have our own backup.
Yeah, I'll bring that up, I'll bring that up at the next, like, revitalization committee meeting, because Carrie Twiliger, you know, reaches out when she sees grants like that, you know, for microgrids, she'll, she'll climb onto something like that. I'll say, "Hey, Carrie, if you see something like that, will that fit into, you know, what we're looking at for Fairhaven's future?" And she'll be able to, you know, "Oh, yeah, hope I know of something like that."
Well, I did ask Doug about it, because they're putting in the solar, but unfortunately, they're very well connected, and I guess they're doing this through RGE, so they're not gonna be independent, be able to flip and switch and just have the power for their local area. And I thought, because Fairhaven being so dense, and so, such a nice little pattern of an area, we could easily set something like that up.
Yeah, it, it can be investigated, I, I, I talked to, uh, somebody about these solar farms, but property is an issue. And, and we're in the village, and, and some of our property that we have, like teach hours, not a village, doesn't mean it can't be done. And they take up a lot of land.
They should have put one on the dump out there in Sterling.
They, it's, we tried to talk.
There's a lot of new facilities they're doing.
There's still some with that dump, but.
But I'd be grateful if we could just look into it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, what is the relationship between the village of Fairhaven and the harvester? Weed harvesters, Cuban farmers?
The, the only relationship, the only relationship is, we try to schedule them usually mid-July, uh, when we think we're at our worst-case scenario, we get them anywhere from a week to ten. When I say a week to ten days, I mean, two weeks, we get them five days or five days. And they've been skipping one body of water every year, and I don't know if it's our turn or not, because they have, they used to have two harvesters and enough equipment to operate them, once the one broke down, they, uh, decided that not to do that, and to keep the one harvester they have running, uh, is at best a challenge, because sometimes even when it's here at the village, it breaks down, and it could be days for parts, and we lose our time like anyplace else does. I mean, if that was something that we, you know, I don't know if that's something that the village would consider getting into, but then you'd have to hire somebody or hire, you know, to operate, there's a whole host of things that come with having your own harvester and, and having a place to dump.
So we don't know whether they're coming this year or not?
Yeah, I haven't called to see.
Until real late in the, in the summer.
So that means we're not having them this year?
No, I don't know, it's always, I said, they've been skipping, I have to find out, and I will, I'll check.
Well, the thing is, that my customers have told me that the weeds are as bad as they've ever seen. And I've already harvested, oh, I'd say eighty percent of my little arena, uh, and I have great compost piles up over the years of weeding, some years I don't have to. This year, uh, it's unbelievably early and unbelievably thick, and the strands of the weeds are incredibly strong.
Yeah.
It's like a different world.
Yeah, I, I, I have to say that around my waterfront, there's more than I would normally see by this time of year. I wouldn't start seeing them till last July, fourth, which usually the water's higher than what it's been right now, I don't know. Chris, what are you seeing in your area? We've got that, uh, green, maybe it's phthamantis or something, that cotton candy looking stuff? Yeah, which should go away, that's a cold water, which you're.
It's a blue green color leaf on it, it's ten leaves that are coming.
What you're talking about is regular weed-weed stuff.
I'm talking about, I've got three or four of them that come as weeds.
See, we don't have sailboats, what he does, and sailboats need to draft, and, uh, we got power boats. I'll check and find out when they're coming, see, see if, make sure we're not being skipped this year.
The Bay Betterment should know that.
Yeah.
Do they sort of orchestrate the relationship, or is that?
It's done through the village, but the Bay Betterment, I know when I was in that assoc- I'm still in that association, but we voted one year to, to provide the village overtime, to pay the overtime, because they have a limited time they could be here. So we asked the village, this was long before me, but, uh, if they would talk to them about overtime, and we would pay the overtime through the Bay Betterment, because that's part of what the Bay Betterment's holding.
Okay, thanks.
I'll check.
And I thoroughly enjoyed reading today.
Change of ideas.
I'd like to have it go another hour. I'm gonna whip this, I'm gonna whip your mouth again.
Chris, anything else?
Most exciting.
Judy? Terry, thank you all for coming, can I have a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening.
Seconded by Judy, before you finish, if I may, I, there's no more discussion.
Aye, aye.